Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and I'd like to welcome you to the July 6th council meeting. This will be the first council meeting under our new mayor, Mayor Todd Jordan, and we'd like to welcome you here. At this time, I would like for a solid stand, I have for the invocation remain standing for the pledge. It is my honor tonight to introduce Ms. Hannah Shepard. She's a good friend of mine, she's the daughter of one of my best friends, I remember her when she was like this tall. She is the Associate Pastor at St. Luke Methodist Church. Ms. Hannah?
Let us pray. Holy and gracious God, who gives us each moment the joy of life and breath and being, thank you for the honor of being in this room together this evening for those who have been elected to serve and begin a fresh term together. Here in this space, Lord, is a spirit of hope, a spirit of fresh starts and possibilities, of anticipation of what may unfold over the next four years. An agenda has been set and there is much to do and discuss, but before all of that, God, before all of those things begin, let us not forget you, oh Lord, and your presence in this space. Let us not forget who is leading each of us as we in turn seek to lead, and for the calling upon our leaders and what has been asked of them when they were sworn in. With this in mind, Lord, we humbly ask you that you would abide with Mayor Todd Jordan, with Councilmen Chad Mims, and Lynn Bryan, and Travis Beard, Buddy Palmer, and Councilwomen Nettie Davis, Janet Gaston, Rosie Jones, and Lee County Supervisor Christie Jordan, and with any and all others who share in this space. And as you abide with them, God, we also ask that you abide with their families as they face long meetings and events and circumstances that would take them away. We have all learned over the past year and a half, once again, that there is little we can control or predict. Sometimes decisions come at us faster than we are prepared to handle them, yet this council has continued to meet and to serve, and they are prepared to do so again. And so I ask for today and for the years ahead, that when things seem unpredictable and difficult, that you would grant them clarity of mind and sincerity of heart and focus. When opinions differ, as they sometimes do, and passions collide or criticisms pierce, grant that they would be met with genuine listening, respect, and sometimes even a thick skin. Grant that each person in this room would lead with a voice that is heard and knows the heart of the people that he or she is speaking for. May their decisions come from a place that holds everyone in high esteem as God's creation, worthy and valued and deserving of a full and equal life. May their power and influence and knowledge be exercised in humility and consideration of all involved. Help them to lead with honesty, compassion, justice, and patience, both in word and in deed, in belief and in practice, even God when it is unpopular or inconvenient. And in this way, Lord, build them up and fill them with courage and boldness to stand up and to speak truth, and above all, to remain faithful. Bind them together and help them to serve as an example of shared and meaningful leadership that truly represents and serves the needs of the people, including those in the peripheral vision of our lives, lost and out of sorts. And on the days when they get it right, and on the days when they get it wrong, remind them that your grace, oh God, goes before them and is sufficient on each day they serve. May the importance of this space and the honor of this calling be upheld, may the joy of leadership be renewed and felt, as together they seek to create a community in which each person is worthy and has the opportunity to thrive, a community of renewal, hope, and our very own Tupelo spirit. We ask this with sincere and grateful hearts as your sons and daughters, chief of your fold, and servants of your kingdom. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. At this time, I'll call on Councilmember Janet Gaston to lead us in our pledge.
Attention, salute. My pledge is that it is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form.
Thank you. This council meeting is going to be a little bit different, we're going to change it up just as fast, we've got to elect some officers, so at this time, I think it's necessary to have an election of a temporary chairman, and I will turn this over to our attorney, Mr. Ben Logan.
Councilman Palmer, I appreciate the council asking me to serve as a temporary chairman this evening, and if that is suitable to the council, we will, the temporary chair will entertain the nominations for our city council president for this term.
I nominate Mr. Buddy Palmer as President of the City Council for 2020.
Second.
Second. Are there any further nominations?
I move that the nomination cease.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor of closing the floor for nominations? Please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Mr. Mims, we need to record here.
Hand up.
Okay, good. I'll ask for a voice vote. All right. And to the main motion of the chair, all in favor of Buddy Palmer as the city council president, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any ayes? Seeing no ayes, I will turn the meeting over to your new council president to complete the meeting.
Thank you. I'll now call this meeting, and I appreciate the confidence you may have, you may be sorry for it a little later, but we'll see about that. So at this time, we need to, in the matter of election of a city council vice president, so at this time, I'll ask for any nominations upon the floor for the vice president of the city council.
Mr. President, I nominate Lynn Bryan for vice president of city council.
Second in motion.
Are there any more nominations for this position? So all in favor of Mr. Lynn Bryan to be the vice president, raise your hand, please. And that is unanimous, so Chad, you got your hand raised?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so at this time, Mr. Lynn Bryan will be the vice president, and by the way, Chad had a vacation planned prior to his first meeting here tonight, so that's the reason he'll be on Zoom, and you can see him right over there, and we'll be asking him questions back and forth, so thank you so much for that. We'll now ask the vice president for the confirmation or amendment to the agenda and the agenda order.
Mr. President, make a motion that we approve the agenda and the agenda order.
Second. So we have a motion by Councilmember Lynn Bryan, we have a second by Travis Beard, all in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous, thank you very much. At this time, we'll go to proclamations, recognitions, and reports of agenda. Any proclamations that we may have? We'll go to recognition of boy or girl scouts, which I don't see any here tonight, employee recognition. Mayor Jordan?
Have two employee recognitions this evening, Gerald Fennell and Senator Lockridge, might propose you come up along with our Chief Jim Gaver. And I ask all three of them to come up as a team, because as a city, that's what we are. We're a team, and when you look to your emergency services, these gentlemen have to look to one another forsaken. And after 25 years, they're still here, so I congratulate both of you with sincere appreciation. A senior Tijuana recognizes Gerald Fennell for 25 years of dedicated employment. Sincere appreciation, senior Tijuana recognizes Senator Lockridge for 25 years of dedicated employment.
Thank you very, thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'll go into public recognitions, and I'll begin with Ms. Nettie Davis.
I would just like to wish us well for the next four years. I've been on the council for, this is the sixth term, which is my 20th year, and I hope we will continue to work as a team Tupelo, and we are happy to have our new mayor, which I know he's going to move the city forward like he moved the football down the field. So we hope that everything would just be great, and we will have an excellent four years, and at the end of this, those four years, I will have 24 years with the, I said.
Thank you. Travis?
Mr. President, I just want to welcome our new council members on board, and say congratulations, and I look forward to working with you during the course of this four years. I'd also like to just thank the council members who worked last year, and along with Mayor Shelton, to move our city forward, I appreciate their effort, and I wish them well. Just God's blessing on you all.
Lynn?
I don't have any comments.
Ms. Rosie, would you like to say anything or introduce yourself as a new member of the council?
I'm Roselia Jones, and I'm just glad to be here and excited to get to work.
Thank you very much. Ms. Janet?
I'm Janet Gaston, I'm also really glad to be here, and I'm honored to be offered this opportunity to serve the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, in one of the most fun-filled times that I have remembered for the last eight years, oh yeah, I'm sorry, Chad, do you have anything you'd like to say, Chad? I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Look, I apologize, I wish I could be there to join everyone's first meeting, and I'm wishing you all well from cloudy Florida, and I look forward to be back in Tupelo and serve the community, so thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Chad. At this time, this is one of the most exciting parts of our meeting, would be the mayor's report.
Well, this is not only very exciting, but I just want to say congratulations again to each and every one of you, commend you on selecting President Palmer as president this next year, I believe that was a wise choice. If I had any advice for the newcomers, it's listen to the people that have been here, ask questions if you need it, don't let pride get in the way, you're not going to know all the answers, I won't either, I will be looking for guidance from them also. I look forward to serving with each and every one of you for the next four years, and hopefully beyond. Ms. Nettie, 20 years, that's an ambassador, and I hope I'm here 20 years from now to say the same thing, so congratulations. You know, we were elected by the ward that we live in, but we represent the city of Tupelo, and I just want us always to remember that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. At this time, we'll close the regular meeting and open the public agenda, beginning with public hearings. We don't have any in the matter of public hearings for lockmings. Is anyone here to speak to that? Any appeals or citizens' hearings? There are none, so we'll close the public agenda and open the regular session, beginning with routine agenda, item five, in the matter of approval of minutes of June 15, 2021, regular city council members, meetings.
Make a motion we approve the minutes. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Lynn Bryan, a second by Mr. Travis Beard, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. At this time, on item six, in the matter, I'm sorry, Chad, pinch me, no, don't pinch me.
I'll pick up the body.
Okay, I don't remember from this point forward. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, buddy.
Okay. Item six, in the matter of review and/or approval of appointment of Don Lewis as chief operating officer, COO.
I move that we would approve the appointment of Don Lewis as chief operation officer for the city.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Beard, we have a second by Ms. Gaston. Todd, would you like to say anything about this, this is your appointee?
That's right. You know, being a second in command is an important job. Mr. Lewis has been here since 1997, has worked his way through the parking wreck in his last eight years as COO. Early on, when I got to know Mr. Lewis, obviously, I believe he knows as much about the city of Tupelo than anybody here, and I thought it was just important to somebody of that kind of knowledge and to make that appointment, and I appreciate the council doing that.
Any other discussion? All in favor of this? Chad?
My hands up.
Hands up, that's unanimous, thank you, thank you very much. Item eight, in the matter and review, in the matter of review and/or approval of appointment of Ben Logan as our city attorney.
No, you skipped one. Buddy, you skipped seven.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, see, I told you all about me. We're doing the matter and/or review approval of appointment of Ms. Kim Hannah as our chief financial officer and city clerk.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Beard, a second by Ms. Nettie Davis. There again, Mr. Mayor.
When I first thought about running for mayor, I went and talked to a man that I respected, and the first thing he said was, if you keep anybody, make sure you keep Kim Hannah. And I don't want to make that guy happy, so I appreciate y'all confirming that appointment.
I think that's good. Any other comments? All in favor? Got your hand up, Chad?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. And now, number eight, in the matter and of review slash approval of appointment of Ben Logan as city attorney.
So move. Second.
We have a motion by, we have a motion by Mr. Bryan, a second by Travis Beard. Mr. Mayor.
I believe it's important that we can go across the hall and ask someone what's legal and what's not legal. I believe Ben has shown in the last eight years of saving the city millions of dollars, and I'd look for that to continue, and I appreciate you confirming that appointment.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
I agree.
Thank you, Chad. Item number nine, in the matter of review slash approval of appointment of Tanner Newman as Director of Department of Development Services.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve Tanner Newman as Director of Development Services.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Travis Beard, a second by Mr. Lynn Bryan. Again, Mayor.
I believe it's important, again, that we have someone to manage the development services here in the city. I appreciate Mr. Pat Faulkner and what he's done, and his willingness to stay on as city planner. Tanner is well-respected, and the short time I've known him, he's shown very good organizational and managerial skills, so I appreciate your confirmation on that appointment.
Any more questions, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, could we have him to stand? He's a new young man on the block, and we get to have youth in our, as part of Team Tupelo.
Let's hear it for Mr. Tanner.
You didn't tell me I was young.
Yeah, you are, you're young, but I'm so used to looking at you.
We have, did we vote? No, we didn't vote. Okay. All in favor of this? That's unanimous with Chad's vote?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. This is probably one of the most important parts of our agenda tonight, would be in the matter of hiring of our council clerk, who is Ms. Missy Shelton.
Mr. President, I move that we hire Missy Shelton as council clerk.
We have a motion by Mr. Travis Beard, a second by Ms. Nettie Davis for hiring Ms. Shelton as our council clerk. Do we have any discussion about that?
I would just like to say that Missy is really a great person, and she really helped keep us in line, and also helped us to remember, because we have so many responsibilities, I appreciate her leadership and her dedication to the council.
I second that.
I would like to say too, as a president, she can kick pretty hard upon this table, so she's kicked me about three times tonight, and I appreciate that. All in favor of Ms. Missy? That's unanimous. Chad?
Yes.
Thank you very much. At this time, number 11 would be in the matter of consideration of ordinance establishing meeting times, places, and establishing the agenda process for the meetings of the Tupelo City Council.
I move that we accept the matter for consideration as far as time, place, and meeting time for the city council.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Beard, we have a second by Ms. Davis. Mr. Logan?
The, this item is contained in tab, or item number 11, in your agenda. We reviewed that this morning, it's similar to what we reviewed at the work session, seems like a couple of weeks ago, it may have just been last week, but the, it spells out pretty much how the council has governed itself with just a few changes over the 20-something years that the council has operated as a city council as opposed to a board of aldermen. And those can be changed during this term, and if anybody wants to change any of those, just please ask, and we'll draft up an amendment to those, but for tonight and for the first few meetings, I would ask that y'all go ahead with this.
Any question, discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you.
Yes.
Got you, thank you, Chad. Item 12, in the matter of adoption of Roberts Rule of Order.
I move that we would adopt the Roberts Rule of Order.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie Davis, a second by Ms. Gaston to adopt this. Ben?
This is contained within your agenda ordinance, and as a formality, we will adopt them by order of the council at this time.
Any questions? All in favor? Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you. On item number 13, in the matter of setting a time for paying the bills.
I move that we set a time for paying bills?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Coach Beard, and we have a second by Lynn Bryan, about setting times for paying bills.
Is it not in here?
It is not.
I would recommend the time being, the, at 4:30 on the day of the council meeting, which is the first and third Tuesdays of each month.
Counsel, do you see here that? Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion at all about this time? All in favor? Thank you very much. Chad said aye. Aye, thank you, Chad. In the matter of time, in the matter of resolution of appointing voting delegate and alternate for MML 2021.
Mr. President, I recommend Ms. Nettie Davis to be our voting delegate, and I need to make a recommendation for the alternative as well.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Travis Beard, a second by Ms. Jones, is that correct? Ben, or Kim, you want to explain this?
Voting delegate is, it is annually, we decide, we all decide who will vote and represent the council, and this will be for the same as vice president at MML.
Okay. You have any questions for Ms. Kim?
Who's the alternate? Who's the alternate?
Buddy, I think we had a question about who the alternate was. Rosie, I think, was seconding my vote, is that correct?
Do we need to?
Yes, you do, just in case something were to happen, and it may not attend, you would need someone else that plans to attend.
Okay, council, does anyone have a nomination for the alternate delegate?
Have we both finished voting for the delegate? We doing it all in one block.
Excuse me, point of order, if Councilman Lynn Bryan, Mr. Councilman Bryan now, used to be two of us, or two of them, if you will accept a friendly amendment to that to add Ms. Councilwoman Jones, then we can proceed with one vote.
I recommend that we accept the friendly amendment. Second.
All in favor of accepting this friendly amendment? That's unanimous.
Yes.
Okay.
Now we need to vote on the, together.
Do I have a nomination for the?
And Lynn.
And Lynn.
And Lynn Bryan.
Yes. Okay. We'll put that motion, all right. So all in favor of the motion of appointing the voting delegate and the alternate for MML, one being Ms. Nettie Davis, the second being Mr. Lynn Bryan?
Don't you get sick, Nettie.
That is correct, Nettie. All in favor? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess I've been on here a long time, with me and, but I wanted to give the two new, three new councilmen opportunity to make a motion, if you all come on in a little fast.
We've been trying.
Thank you, appreciate y'all's service, Ms. Nettie and Lynn. Number 15, in the matter of bill paying, July 6, 2021. We've got to pay the bills.
Make a motion we pay bills.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Travis Beard to pay the bill. Ms. Janet?
I second.
We have a second. Tonight, the bills were paid by Travis Beard, Nettie Davis, Ms. Janet, Ms. Rosie, I helped a little bit, and we were under the watchful eye of Ms. Tracy Gillard and Johnny Timmons. All in favor of paying the bills? Thank you, Chad, appreciate it. Number 16, in the matter of advertising and promotional items, we have none. So we'll go to 17, in the closing of the 2018 revenue bond banker account.
So move. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Lynn Bryan, a second by Ms. Nettie Davis. Kim?
Yes, sir. In 2018, we issued $14 million worth of revenue bonds, this was for the AMR project, part of it was for the electric meters, and part was for the water and sewer meters. This project has been completed, these funds have been depleted from the fund, so it's time to close these bank accounts, and with opening and closing bank accounts, that requires council approval, so I'm reading this before you to close these accounts.
Any questions?
No.
Any questions?
No.
Discussion, no. All in favor of closing this account? Thank you, that's unanimous, thank you. Number 17, Ms. Kim, in the matter of closing 2018 revenue bond banker account.
18.
18, I'm sorry, in the matter of the FY 2021 petty cash account. Eighteen, I'm sorry, in the matter of the FY 2021 petty cash account.
I move that we would establish a 2021 petty cash account.
I second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie Davis. Ms. Janet Gaston, a second?
Ms. Rose Jones.
Oh, Ms. Rose Jones.
Yeah, Ms. Rose.
Okay, Ms. Rose Jones. All right, Ms. Kim?
Yes. The council has the authority to allow petty cash accounts in the department. I have the departments listed with the name of the person that's the responsible party for this petty cash account. The prior council named these at the beginning of fiscal year, but since we have a new council, I'm asking to reopen these accounts. They've all been closed, but I'm asking for your permission to open these bank accounts with the name of the people as the responsible party. And the amount is listed by each one.
Thank you. Any questions, discussions? Chad?
I agree.
All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Item number nineteen, in the matter of approval to submit 2021 homeland security applications.
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Beard, a second by Ms. Janet Gaston. Abby?
Good evening. I am asking the council to approve the applications for the 2021 Mississippi Office of Homeland Security grants. I'll be submitting on behalf of our fire department, police department, and our IT department. As discussed earlier, this equipment goes towards national preparedness goals, prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery. And there is no latch for these grants. Any questions?
Do we have any questions for Abby? Chad, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Abby. In the matter of approval or rejection in the intergovernmental transfer of a county-owned vehicle to the city of Tupelo.
I move that we would approve the intergovernment transfer of a county-owned vehicle to the city of Tupelo.
I second it. I second it.
We have a... we have a motion by Ms. Nettie Davis. We have a second by Ms. Rosie Jones. That would be Ben Logan, if you would comment.
This is for the vehicle for the mayor. He was fond of his vehicle he had with the county. And the county agreed this morning to sell that vehicle to the city. The market value of the vehicle was between fifty to forty-nine and fifty-four thousand dollars. The county kindly agreed to sell it to us for thirty-five thousand. This resolution approves that intergovernmental transfer and sets out the details on that.
Any questions, concerns? Chad, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Number twenty-one, in the matter of lot mowing.
I move that we approve the lot mowing list.
Second.
We have a lot mowing list that was on motion made by Mr. Travis Beard, a second by Mr. Lynn Bryan. Pat Faulkner, are you here? Would you make some comments on there if you needed to? Okay. All in favor of this lot mowing list? Thank you. That's unanimous. Thank you. Number twenty-two, in the matter of NMNU request for declaration of surplus vehicles for auction.
I move that we approve the surplus list for auction.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Beard. We have a second by Ms. Gaston. Chief Clayton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's out in front of you is about eleven seized complicated vehicles that our northbound city architec unit has seized over the years. We are asking that they have been used, but they are no longer useful to that unit. And we're asking that they be surplus and sold for auction.
Any questions? The motion is for a declaration of surplus vehicles for auction. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Number twenty-three, in the matter of Narcan MOU.
I move that we would approve the Narcan MOU. Could you explain what that is?
That is... well, we've got Chief Clayton that will be glad to explain that to you.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. We have a motion by Ms. Nettie Davis, a second by Travis Beard. Chief Clayton?
One of the most harmful drugs that's out of our nation now, is fentanyl. It can be absorbed through the skin and can cause death immediately if not careful. This is just a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Area. They have afforded us over a hundred units to give our officers. With that comes training. That will serve two purposes. One would be if our officers come into contact with this drug and it's absorbed, they can give this a nasal spray, they'll give this immediately. And secondly, if someone, one of our citizens, or someone we come upon that we may not even know, we see the signs, which we will learn and which they learn and train, they can give this person Narcan as well. This has been done several times in the past, with as many as three lives saved that I know of, possibly even more.
Any questions for the chief? Did you understand that, Chad?
Yeah.
Okay. The motion is to accept the MOU concerning this Narcan. All in favor?
Right.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Number twenty-four, in the matter of bid rejection, curb and gutter 2021-015PW.
I move that we accept the rejection of bid 2021-017PR.
Second.
I'm sorry. 2021-015PW.
I second it.
We have a motion by Travis. We have a second by Rosie. And I think, before I call... that's okay, Chuck, unless you just want to come up there. But I think you told us yesterday you just simply didn't have any bidders. So, certainly, we would like to reject that. Did you hear that, Chad? We didn't have any bidders on this. So, any other questions at all? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Number twenty-five, in the matter of rejection of bid 2021-017PR skate park renovations.
I move that we would approve the rejection of bid 2021-017PR skate park.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie Davis. We have a second by Ms. Rosie Jones. And Alex, would you care to come up and give some information about this?
Yes. So, at the beginning of the year, this was in my capital project for this current year. The amount that we had set aside for this project was three hundred thousand dollars. And so, when we opened bids this past Wednesday, we had one bidder, and that bid was for five hundred and forty-eight thousand, which was significantly more than what our budget allowed. So, asking council tonight to reject these bids, so my team and I can go back to work and get a skate park that's in the budget.
Do you have any questions for Alex? The motion is to reject the rejection of bid number 2021-017PR skate park renovations. All in favor of this rejection? Chad?
Yeah.
Okay. That's unanimous. Thank you. Number twenty-six, in the matter of bad debt write-off, January 2020.
I move that we approve the bad debt write-off, January 2020 through June 2020.
Second.
That's unanimous. We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Ms. Janet Gaston. Johnny Timmons, if you please.
Before you tonight is a bad debt file. We are required by TVA every six months to retire this bad debt file. The period that this covers is January 2020 to June 2020. And actually, in that period of time, we collected thirty-one million, three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. The loss was twenty-seven thousand dollars, which is less than one percent. So, job well done by the billing and collection office.
Thank you, Johnny. Any questions for Johnny? All in favor of this motion? That would be unanimous. Thank you. At this time, we'll go to steady agenda, which we have no items. The next item would be executive session, and all entertain a motion to close this open meeting to determine the need for executive session.
I move that we would determine the need for the state...
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie Davis, a second by Mr. Lynn Bryan. All in favor? Now entertain a motion to go into executive session.
The need, Councilman Palmer, is we discussed the sale of real property this morning. And also, Director Timmons mentioned after our meeting that he has needs a go-ahead to negotiate on the purchase of some real property for a substation. Both of those items are matters that are allowable to be discussed in the executive session.
Now, let her...
Ask who's going to stay.
Yes. Who would you like to stay for this?
We certainly need the mayor, Don, Kim, Tanner Newman, Stephen Reed, and Johnny Timmons. I think that would round us out.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into the executive session. Some move?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Travis Beard, a second by Ms. Nettie Davis. All in favor? We're now in executive session. Thank you.